Good evening, everyone. This is Kelly Beegee coming to you live from the Senior Center in North Chelmsford, home of the Thursday Pea Knuckle matches. But we're here tonight for the second and final meeting for the Spring Town Meeting Session. This is something of a mop-up session. There are only five articles remaining on the warrant to be discussed. There were seven. Two of them will be withdrawn, as you'll hear. And all the heavy lifting was taken care of on Monday night, passing the town's municipal and school budgets for fiscal 2026, the budget for the capital improvements for Neshobatech and a couple of others that come this time of year. So what we have now remaining are mostly zoning bylaws that will be presented by the planning board. The first one we'll hear tonight is a citizen petition to encourage the town to explore having a place that is a cemetery for pets. I was listening in to some of the discussion about this. Apparently, there is not such a place, and you can't bury your pet in your backyard, and you can't bury it with you in a cemetery. So a standalone place is kind of needed, and that'll be the first one up tonight. Then the keys will be turned, the podium will be turned over to the planning board for discussion about general bylaws involving various corrections to existing bylaws, very important discussion about floodplain district and the new rules that are being imposed on that at the federal and state level. And then a couple of simpler ones with local appeal, whether or not to allow easements for electric vehicle charging stations and a street extension acceptance. This should all take place pretty quickly. If we're still here by nine o'clock, I'd be really surprised. The zoning bylaws tend to go by pretty quickly, even though they're extensive. A lot of research has gone into making them correct, town council and that sort of thing. So I want you to stay tuned, please, while we begin our next session. It will be called to order momentarily by moderator John Curland. And for those of you who weren't here on Monday night, we went through a whole lot of material in a very quick period of time. Duck if you can. I mentioned the town budgets. We went through, there's a new wrinkle called the consent agenda. What's really interesting about those budget articles is how overwhelmingly they passed positively with very few abstentions or negative votes. It's a far cry from some of the years way, way back when I first started with the Chelmsford Telemedia. Back then, it was Cable 43, and there was really a lot of drama, if you will, over the passing of budgets. I guess we're past that, and that's a good thing for the town. It maybe suggests that the people are running smoothly. Here we go.
Pledge of allegiance. Oh, sorry. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would you please, we'll do a quorum count now. While we're doing that, as I announced it, I wanted to appoint an assistant town moderator. And after conferring with town council, he says the better way to do it is to have you vote to approve or not approve my nominee. So we will take that vote after my nominee has a moment to introduce herself after the quorum.
This quorum count to see who is here and who isn't.
Okay, I'm declaring that we have a quorum. By the way, the fire exits are on both sides and at the entrance where you come in. And again, if you have to leave the meeting early, kindly drop off your electronic voting devices with the checkers in the front hall. Now I would like to introduce my suggested assistant town moderator. She would like to say a few words, and then we'll have a very quick vote, up or down, whether you want her to be the assistant moderating event I cannot serve.
My name is Amina Langford. I've been a resident here in Chelmsford since 2011. I know a lot of people in this room know me, some don't, so I just wanted to give you a rundown of who I am and probably why John picked me. I was very involved in the school PTOs when my children were younger. I was on the Community Action Program Committee for a few years. I was a town meeting rep for Precinct 6 for about six years, a little more than that. I was also on the Finance Committee for two appointments, but it was...
Six years.
Yeah, another six years. I stepped down from that role in 2021 in order for me to go back to law school while I worked full-time. I've since graduated, and I am now an attorney here in Massachusetts. I will be starting my own firm in Woburn, which will go alongside with my tax practice, which I have been a tax preparer for over 20 years. I just wanted to say something. I know that town meeting isn't about me, or it isn't about anybody up here. It's about you, and it's about the people that you represent, because I've been in your situation. That's the most important thing, and I feel that it is an incredible honor to be even asked to sit here and possibly have to step in for John and support the good work that all of you do. So thank you very much.
Can I entertain a motion to approve her as the assistant? Do I have seconds? Can we have a vote on that, on the motion? Okay, all in favor of accepting Amina Langford as the assistant moderator? Please vote yes, or if you don't, vote no. The motion passes, 110 in favor, seven opposed, one abstention. I appreciate your confidence in me, and I can assure you that you will not be disappointed if Amina has to serve in my stead. When we last left off, we were at Article 28. We had skipped Article 27, so we're going to go back to that. That's the pet cemetery article. And then we're going to go to Articles 31 and 32, which are the last two articles of the evening. So Mary Donovan? Could you please come up to the microphone up here? No, no, right at the podium, right here. Okay, you'll have to speak up, though. Speak into the microphone.
Hello. My name is Mary Donovan. I'm a resident of Chelmsford for many years.
Mary, please state your address.
Seventh Hanglewood Drive in Chelmsford.
Thank you.
For the past 40 years. I'm here to speak to see if you people will help me get a study committee in the town of Chelmsford for a pet cemetery. There are many animals here in town, and there is no decent place to really bury them. And I'm hoping that maybe with, there are over 4,000 dogs licensed this year plus, and that over 3,000 cats and few other domestic animals. But my pets are like my children, and I'm sure there's many others people in here that have pets feel the same way. And I'd like to see if a study pity can be held, and I have all kinds of information about the caskets, grave sites, land that may be available, and plots, and how much it costs. And it doesn't cost that much. It will not cost the town any extra money. Matter of fact, it doesn't even cost as much as a human. And there are some states that allow pets to be buried with humans, and there is none here in Massachusetts. I have many pictures and many things, and I would love to be on the study committee because I can show you how much it costs. I have six dogs buried, and how much it costs me is nothing at all. It costs me more to pay for medical care for one. If anybody has any questions and would like to know any information about pets and having a pet cemetery, you can ask me right now, or you can call me at my home.
Thank you very much, Mary. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation on this motion, on this article?
Okay. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends against approval of Article 27 with one abstention.
Does the Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board recommends against approval of Article 27 with two in favor, three opposed.
Now is an opportunity for people to ask questions of the presenter or to make discussion.
Will Wagner, Precinct 3. Mr. Moderator, through you to town manager or town council regarding the petition. Oh, I see, it changed up there. Expressed its support for Select Board, and that was, that's different than it was there earlier. Okay. All right, so the question is, with this, this is establishing a group to investigate the validity of creating such a cemetery? Is that correct? It's not actually creating one at the moment?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Through you to the speaker, Mr. Moderator.
That's you, Mary. He's going to ask you a question now.
I hate to tell you, I'm a little deaf, so I'm having hard of hearing you.
Okay, I'll speak up. Is that better?
Thank you.
What is the concept behind your petition for a pet cemetery? I understand you talked about the need for, or our desire to keep our pets in memory and everything else. Why are you putting this petition forward right now?
I'm sorry. I still have a hard time.
Okay, Mary, he's asking why you are presenting this petition now. He just wants to know what you want to do.
I would like to see about having a pet cemetery put here in Chelmsford. Right now, I have a law being put into the legislature, H. 122, to protect a pet cemetery in the state of Massachusetts. Right now, there is no pet cemetery safe in Massachusetts, and the best way to have a safe pet cemetery is to have it run in your town, just like a human cemetery, and it will not cost any more money. As a matter of fact, it'll be less money to bury a pet than it is to bury a human.
Thank you.
So what is the, how would you be funding such? Is that better?
Okay, he wants to know how this cemetery would be funded. Where would the money come from?
The money would be funded through the person that owns the pet that wants it buried. And then it would be, just like in a human cemetery, you pay a maintenance fee. That maintenance fee will go into an allotment account, which will pay for the maintenance of keeping the grounds of the cemetery in good condition, just like a human cemetery.
Thank you. Are there any other towns around here that have a pet cemetery?
I was kind of hoping you wouldn't ask me that. Because that, right now, is a very sore point in my life. There is or was a pet cemetery in Tingsborough. I have six dogs and two cats buried there, and I can't even visit them because they built a two-family house on a part of it because the pet cemetery is not run by the town. It was run differently, and I'm hoping that we will never have to do that in town, and I will work to make sure.
Thank you. Last question. Mr. Moderator, through you to the Finance Committee and the Select Board. Do you have a specific reason that you recommended against this petition?
There we go. Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker. I was the abstention vote. However, I will say that the article was not presented as forming a committee. It was presented as a resolution to obtain land. Our concern lied with the both cost of obtaining that land, the availability of that land, and the cost of maintaining that land. And it was not clear to us. We were also concerned that although we are aware that there's a petition at the state level that has not been acted on yet, and so we were sympathetic and empathetic, but we were not seeing the cost behind it being addressed.
Thank you. Select Board have the same opinions, or?
Yes, we had two people who voted in favor and three against, and our concerns were similar. We, I think that several of us expressed that we would like to see a clearer plan, possibly with a location picked out and some more detail to it before we would kind of be in favor, but the costs of long-term maintenance and on the town to run it were considerations.
Given those statements, Mr. Moderator, I do have one more question. The initial presentation of the article had different words than are up there right now, and it seems that the article presented to both the Select Board and the Finance Committee was different than the wording up there right now. So which is the official article that is being voted on?
It is the motion that is before you now on a study.
Thank you.
You owe me one question, by the way. Go ahead.
Sam Polton, Precinct 4, with a couple of questions. Thank you very much for raising the concern. I'm familiar with the former pet cemetery in Tingsborough on 3A and what was done. Question. The way I read this, this is simply asking for the town meeting to express its support for a study. Is that all this is? This is to look into?
Right, right. The motion that's before you that you would be voting on is for a study.
So we could look into it and, A, find that there is no suitable piece of land? We could find that it's not financially feasible? We could find out all of those things if we had the study. If we don't have a study, we wouldn't get any information. Is that correct?
Yes.
So this is just a study?
I would lie.
Yes, yes.
Would there be any cost connected to the study?
I would assume that the Select Board and the people in town would volunteer to do that type of study.
So this motion...
No, they're not asking for any money.
So no money's being asked for, just a study?
Yes, I think that's your fourth question.
Thank you, that's my question.
Mr. Moderator, Brian Latina, Precinct 9. Thank you, sir. To Mrs. Donovan, thank you very much for your efforts as a citizen of our town. Can you tell us what people do with their pets in our town today when they pass along?
They do what is illegal in the town. They put them in their backyard.
Okay.
Or they go to the vets, and they leave them there and let them...
So all you're asking for, Mrs. Donovan, is to have, maybe the town manager, he appoints lots of committees, to have a committee that the town meeting supports so that people don't bury their pets in their backyards? Is that, does that kind of summarize?
No, I would like a pet cemetery.
So you're going to, you'd look for a pet cemetery?
My pets are like my children.
Understood.
And there are 4,000 plus, pay $15 every year for a license. Some of that money can also be used to support the pet cemetery. It doesn't cost that much. It costs me only $600 to bury my pet, to bury me in the human cemetery.
Thank you, Mrs. Donovan. Mr. Moderator, you can start the clock. I think this lady has brought a couple of different articles to this town meeting. We voted a bunch of money in the last, on Monday night, a lot of money. We even voted $50,000 to do a study that we have no capability of doing in our town. Hire a consultant, Mr. Moderator. I'm sure the town manager can find it within this town meeting. Members here, probably some of them have pets. I bet you, you'd have an overwhelming number of people who would join such a committee with Mrs. Donovan's idea. A study committee to find a place, or at least have a discussion about what we do with our pets when we lose them. And she's right, an awful lot of people treat their pets better than some of their kids, frankly. But I can imagine that town meeting would stand behind this lady and support an article for a no-cost committee, either assigned by Mr. Cohen or this committee, I mean, this committee here, this town meeting. I think it's just a question of saying, yes, I support Mrs. Donovan's idea to have a committee. That's a simple one. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Ginger Scoog, Precinct 5. Mr. Moderator, through you to the Select Board members who are here. Would you please be willing to express your opinions about the revision that is here? Did you see this revise? Let me try this again. Oh my God, I'm so off my game. I'd like to hear from the Select Board their opinion on the article as it's being presented because I do believe we're seeing this change of language. Can we do that? And does that count as a question? Oh, no, I've asked two.
Would you, would you like to, I can... Okay, so you want, okay. So, yeah, so we were just having a little discussion up here. I do think that you are correct in that the wording here is a little bit different than I think what we were initially presented. I think that what we were initially presented, presented more as an agreement to go ahead with a pet cemetery and to do all of the things that are necessary to make that come to fruition. The way that this is worded definitely seems more like a study, which is more reasonable, which is something that I personally feel like I may have been more inclined to agree to, but I still don't know. To be honest, a study is really just a group of people getting together and coming up with a plan to present to us, right, for approval. So I don't know if we need a formal study by the town, or if people who are interested want to join Mary and her efforts here. Yes, it's a little different, to answer your question, than what I think we all kind of initially voted on. I think there is a slight difference. Yeah.
Pat or Aaron, do you?
I'm sorry, can you speak up, please?
I was just asking whether Pat or Aaron had anything to add.
Actually, what's in our, what's in our presentation, our PowerPoints, is exactly what we've been seeing since we started talking about this. The first one is what was submitted as far as the citizen petition, and then town council converted it into what was a legal, you know, for us to vote on.
Wonderful.
I voted in favor of it because I understood that there was, we weren't making any commitment. It was just to do something to see if anything could be done, and it has been mentioned before. Mrs. Donovan has been talking about this for years, so I think we should do something and finalize it one way or another.
So I'm not going to repeat what Pat said, but my initial interpretation was exactly how it's written here. So even though the language is different, it's still the same for me, and I did vote to support it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You're welcome.
Mr. Moderator, Doreen Dees, Precinct 9, you can start the clock.
Sure.
I know the town owns a lot of parcels in Chelmsford, and a lot of it is not buildable. It cannot be built on. We have all this land, and we have no use for it, nothing that we can do with it. So why not make it a pet cemetery? I mean, at least then it's doing something. There's nothing wrong with having a study, trying to find land that can be used to be a pet cemetery, that we already own, so therefore it wouldn't cost us a dime. And the fact that she's saying that the people that put their pets in this cemetery would be the ones that would be paying for the maintenance, again, it wouldn't cost a dime. And the study obviously isn't going to cost a dime because the study will be done by people who are willing to put the work in without getting paid. So it's my opinion that I believe that this study is worthwhile. I believe that we have land, plenty of it, that we don't have to buy, so we're not going to be costing us any money to buy land. So in my opinion is, we should be voting yes on this article.
Thank you. Anyone else? There being none? Oh, there is being, there is being someone.
Mr. Moderator, through to town council. Is there a law in Massachusetts that prevents you from burying a pet in your backyard?
John Eitman, Town Council. I'm not aware of any such law. There may be Board of Health regulations that would apply, but I haven't reviewed those in town.
And are you aware of a law in our municipality that prevents it?
I am not, no.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, through to the town manager. Are you able to put a pet cemetery on conservation land?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the speaker. Under state law and the state constitution, you're not allowed to put a pet cemetery on conservation land. It's also not an allowable use under Community Preservation Act as well. So therefore, there aren't very many parcels that are not wetlands that the town owns that you could put a pet cemetery on that, because again, if you take out the conservation land, community preservation land and wetlands, and it's not allowed in the cemeteries, the only thing that's, the only parcel that comes to my mind is the 54 Richardson Road, the former highway yard where the dog park is. That is the only parcel that I'm aware of that isn't encumbered for that use.
Thank you. And... Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Through you to the presenter.
Yes.
He's got a question for you. Hi, Mary. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Not really, but great.
No? Okay. I'd get louder.
Not too.
Are you asking for a study or a... Are you asking for a study, or are you asking-
No, I would like to get a proof that we could put one in, because I know there is some land available. And I will work to help how much it costs, and where the maintenance fees will go to pay for the care for the pets. And especially since I know it's illegal to bury my pets in my backyard. And if I sell my house, and the people don't know there's a pet there and they dig it up, my lawyer, the lawyer can go after my house and the money that they paid for that house, and they get, I get the money. The person that buys my house gets the house and the money. And I go with nothing. There is no law right now to protect, and it's illegal to bury in your yard. And the way the houses in Chelmsford are building up condos and whatnot, and a lot of people with pets will not be able to bury them in their backyard, because there will be no backyards.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, it's third-
So pet cemetery will solve the problem, having them treated, just like a family member.
Thank you, Mary, you've answered the question very well.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, if you'd indulge me, one final question. Through you to Town Council, if we vote on the article as written, do you interpret this as a study committee, or as a resolution to purchase property?
This is the motion I'm looking at.
Yes.
To answer that question, I do not interpret this as a motion that requires the town to buy property. It is what it says it is, which is, expresses its support to have the Select Board and the Town Manager look into acquiring a parcel of land that could be read as forming a study committee, but there are other ways that the town could look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Doug Bruce, Precinct 11, question for attorney, town's attorney. I've just downloaded from the town website the duly served and signed warrant article, and it's different than what's on the screen right now. So what we're looking at on the screen right now, is that even legal?
Let me ask him.
Yes.
It's the moderator's decision as to whether a motion is within the scope of the article, the moderator has already made that decision, I would agree with that, I think it is within the scope.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And just one other point I wanted to make, you don't have to start the timer, knowing that there's legislation pending before the state, I might suggest that we postpone or table this, waiting to see what the state's gonna say, so that that can help guide a study committee, so that we can be in compliance with the state, so we're not doing double work, or even potentially going out and exploring options and expenditures and things like that, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Will Wagner, Precinct 3, just one thing I wish to address, a statement made by a previous speaker, which is why I'm back up here-
Okay, that is permissible, go ahead.
And the statement from one of the previous speakers was that there is no law forbidding someone from burying their pet in their backyard, and so forth, there, as Town Council has mentioned, there may be Board of Health requirements, however, as Mrs. Donovan presented, it's important to note that burying a pet in your backyard, while it may be legal, is not the same as a dedicated space which will not be sold, many people are moving around, so if you bury your pet in your backyard and you move, then you've lost the grave of your pet, and potentially, the new homeowner could have a disturbing find if they go to change the landscaping, which, as Mrs. Donovan suggests, might result in legal implications, I'm not sure about that, but either way, it would be a disturbing find for someone to move into a house and find the pet there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Moderator, Badri Uqub, Precinct 11, out of curiosity, how much does a human cemetery cost per year, or maintenance?
I can't hear you now.
I said, how much does the cost for a human cemetery per plot or per person cost roughly? Does anybody in town, Cemetery Commission-
Okay, Mr. Sousa will respond.
Mr. Moderator, to answer the question, it varies on the size of the lot, I'm gonna estimate it's approximately $1,000 roughly per gravesite, and I, were you asking about the cost of the cemetery department to keep the cemeteries in operation?
In operation, correct.
So this year, and for the budget that Town Meeting approved on Monday night, for the coming fiscal year, the cost is $466,536 to maintain the town's six cemeteries, that's for staff and expenses.
Okay, I'm not sure that's what he asked, but-
That was useful information, thank you very much. Mrs. Donovan, if you may, if you are able to answer this, what was the amount that you were paying at Tingsborough for your pets?
I'm sorry, Tingsborough.
How much did you pay to bury each pet in Tingsborough?
Less than $500.
For each pet?
For each pet.
And when I opened the grave to put a second dog in, it cost me only $199 to open it up, and I buy their coffin, it only cost 200. Thanksgiving, I had to put a dog to sleep. The last two months of his life were terrible, and it cost me $18,000, and I had to end up letting him go. I don't mind paying the money, but it doesn't cost as much to bury my pet, and if I'm willing to pay for their medicine, and pay the few dollars to bury him like I wanna be buried. And if I can't bury them, I'd want them buried like a family member, and I want to add to, because without doing it that way, it adds to my pain and memories, and I like to go visit them, just like I go to visit my mother and father, I go to visit my pets. But unfortunately, right now, I can't visit them, 'cause I don't own the land, but I do all the plot.
Thank you, Mary, that was the very thorough answer.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Anyone else? There being none, we will vote on Article 27.
As the vote comes in, this is a great example of how the road from a submission for a Town Meeting article to the final product that gets shown on the screen and gets voted on, can be very complicated. There are many steps involved in the way, it has to go through to Town Council, Town Council often rewords things to be more legally correct, and so what you saw here was a little confusion.
The article passes, 100 in favor, 18 opposed, four abstentions.
Did you say? You did it, it passed?
Yes, it passed.
Oh, I love you all! I love you all! Oh my god, thank you.
Take care, Mary. Okay, now we get to Article 31. Oh, Charlie, Chuck, Charles.
My name is Chris LaValle, I'm the Chair of the Planning Board, and tonight I'm going to be presenting on a couple zoning articles, Article 31 and Article 32. Article 31, let me get to the presentation. So back when we passed the MBTA zoning bylaws, the, for every bylaw, the Attorney General reviews our bylaws to make sure that they are in compliance. During that 90-day review period, the Attorney General's Office did find a few potential issues with some of our other bylaws, not with the MBTA zoning itself, but with some of the other bylaws that we have. The potential issues that they found are related to erosion control, potential waivers and considerations of fiscal impact, and then the definition of family. We had Town Council review the recommendations from the Attorney General's Office, and the Town Council found out that, or provided information to us, that there are really no changes needed to the erosion control, based on our procedures and our bylaws. However, there were a couple areas that we did need to take a look at, the special permit process, as well as the definition of family. So what we did is, I reviewed the appropriate sections, made recommended edits according to Town Council recommendations and the Attorney General's Office recommendations, and then we brought it to the Planning Board for approval. So specifically, school impacts for special permits are not allowed to be considered, unfortunately, based on state law. So when a special permit project comes before the Planning Board, and we do look at potential impacts to the town, the town services, one service that we are not allowed by state law to take a look at in terms of impact is school facilities and school system. So we actually had that as an explicit consideration, oops, so we needed to remove that in a couple areas. So we removed it in the 19561 section as well, and we added the exclusion for the special permit in the other areas as well. The other area that was, an area that we needed to take a look at was our definition of family, and the use of family in our bylaws. We found two instances, one is the definition itself, and the other, when we talked about a dwelling, where we were considering a multifamily dwelling as three or more family unit, family dwelling units, we removed the word "family." And then for the definition itself, the recommended, or the problem with our definition, is that it could come under potential lawsuits from the Fair Housing Act. So what we did is, we took the recommendation of the Attorney General's Office, and that is the definition that was used in the Brookline Town that was approved by the Attorney General. So we just used that by law, that definition. So the proposal before you to vote on is the removal of the school facilities as a consideration, the addition of the words excluding the public school system, and then the changes to the two sections for family definitions. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 31.
And does Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 31.
Thank you, thank you, I'm sorry. For those who may be wondering why we skipped 29 and 30, those articles have been withdrawn, so we will not be addressing them this evening. I thought maybe all of you knew that, but maybe you didn't, so, my bad. Mr. Wagner?
Will Wagner, Precinct 3, just one question on the redefinition of family, one or more persons occupying a dwelling unit and living as a single nonprofit housekeeping unit. So technically, you could be talking about 10 people who choose to reside together as long as it's not a profit-making unit?
From a zoning perspective, yes, however, we do have a health code that does limit the number per dwelling.
Thank you.
Sherman Horton, Precinct 6, this, the redefinition of family is the topic I'd like to speak to, and there is a question here. It seems like a redefinition of something that is, for the purpose of using the word in other parts of the bylaws, that maybe doesn't apply. In other words, why not not use multifamily as a term, use multi-tenant instead, and then define tenant to be some number, you know, whatever the new family definition is? Seems like you're changing the definition of family for the purpose of-
Okay, okay, sir, you did ask a question, let him, let him answer the question.
So was that considered, is that something the Attorney General has considered, or is multifamily so embedded in everything that they're willing to change the family definition? That's my question.
So the term multifamily is an industry standard term, it is also not specifically related to the definition of family. It's really a multi-dwelling, like you said, but it is an industry standard term, so we did not consider changing that, otherwise, people might not really understand what we were talking about.
You could start the clock. Changing the definition of family now means people don't understand what you're talking I still think it's worth doing, to vote for this, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Thorne, Precinct 7, this definition change for family was a bit of a surprise, so my question is, is this the definition that the state requires every town to adopt in order to define their bylaws?
No, we could have come up with a different version, but again, not knowing what might come under scrutiny in terms of the Fair Housing Act, we wanted to use a definition that had already been approved by the Attorney General.
So, okay, how many other towns, there's what, 357 towns and cities in Massachusetts, how many other towns use this definition?
At least two, if we pass this.
Two, two.
At least.
But right now, right now, before we pass this, how many other towns use this definition?
So my understanding is that it's based on the Brookline definition, and it is a recommendation from the Attorney General's Office, so my assumption is that they are using that as a recommended definition for any town that does have an issue.
But no other town that you know of has changed the definition to this definition except Brookline.
I would not say that, I would say I have not, we have not looked into how many towns are doing it.
I said that you know of.
Yeah.
So-
Brookline has.
Okay, Mr. Thorne, that was your fourth question, so-
Yeah, so start the clock. One thing I learned a long time ago is when you start changing the definition of words, you can start opening up some tremendous difficulties, not only in understanding what's going on in the law, bylaws, zoning, everything else, and this particular one, for those of us who have families that are related to us by blood, or by marriage, or by other legal means, to change this to a definition that is used by only one town, because somehow the Attorney General says, okay, you can use it, is not something that I would want to do. A family is defined, as what you can see by the crossed-out letters here, I think it's appropriate, it's been that way for any number of years, we're not required to change it, I don't think we should change it, because it is a good definition as stated under the crossed-out letters. One or more persons, a one-person family is kind of a strange change, you know, is one person really a family, or it's not really a family, it's a person. So changing the definition of family in the law, and all our bylaws, and all our zoning to be what you're reading here, I think is a terribly improper thing to do. It doesn't honor the family unit, it doesn't say anything about who's occupying the property and their relationship to each other, it literally opens it up to anybody and any combination of people in any situation taking occupancy of a dwelling unit. I think the definition of family should remain the same, and I would urge you to vote against it, because this is a, this is really a significant change, even though it's made to sound simple, because Brookline uses it. because Brookline uses it.
Thank you.
Kathy Tebberdy, Precinct 8, question to the presenter. In family, the previous definition, there was no discussion about money, and now there is a discussion about nonprofit housekeeping unit. Does that mean that I am the owner, and I rent to three other people, but it covers my rent, my mortgage, so it's nonprofit? I don't know what that means, could you please explain that to me?
Sure. I believe that that piece has been put in to prevent a number of people living together and also being considered as a working unit. So an employer could have people living and making money in that same unit, and I believe that that was put in to prevent that type of scenario from happening.
Doesn't sound like you're really sure.
I'm not, but that's what I would imagine that would address.
Town Council, how would you define that definition? How would you interpret that language?
You're asking, okay, go ahead, Tom.
I don't have an interpretation of it, I haven't had to apply it. What I can say is that the definition was put in to avoid conflict with federal law, specifically the Fair Housing Act. This definition was suggested by the Attorney General as one that they believe would avoid that conflict. That's why I believe the planning board adopted it. As to how it's going to be interpreted for specific situations, that remains to be determined.
Start the clock, please. Thank you. My concern is that you believe something, it has to be interpreted, it could bite us really badly. I don't, I think that we need to better understand the words, because words really matter, and not everything falls in the favor of the town if we have to litigate, and I am very concerned, because it's very nebulous at this point, and I think we need to crisp that language up. Kudos to Brookline for getting through, I don't think that's a good enough reason for Chelmsford to do it. I think we need to be more clear and concise. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Chris Bowman, Precinct 10. I have a prepared statement. Two of the three changes eliminate the special permit application's middle requirement to provide, quote, "the need for additional school facilities," unquote, and the, and the fiscal impact. Large multifamily complexes mean lots of children, including MBTA zoning with a minimum high density of 15 units per acre that, quote, "shall be suitable for families with children," unquote, a direct impact on our school system, including facilities. For purposes of transparency, the full scope affecting the town is necessary upfront, and to understand the kinds of impacts that are looming. Otherwise, the full scope and financial burden are deficient and hidden. Remember, the school system is about one-half the town's budget. A high financial burden will overwhelm the town's budget and increase taxes. In January 2025, the Supreme Judicial Court found the state's implementation guidelines for the MP TA zoning statute were unenforceable, because the state failed to comply with the Administrative Procedures Act, in which one of the requirements is providing the fiscal impact to the public and private sectors. This means the school system. The third change revises the definitions of dwelling unit and family. The change in these definitions leaves it vague, especially that of family. So vague, the town's residential character is unrecognizable. Vague definitions leave the town vulnerable to interpretations of other entities, such as developers, making up their own interpretations, and vulnerable to the courts interpreting, interpreting what these definitions are, rather than what we intend. In March of this year, the SJC relied heavily on Fitchburg's zoning definition of family, similar to Chelmsford's, favoring Fitchburg's definition, not the developer's interpretation. This exemplifies the extreme importance of definitions. Specificity clarifies its intent and purpose, and persuades the courts in interpreting them as we intend. On local zoning, the SJC stated, the, quote, "The legislature has left it to each municipality to define family for purposes of its own zoning code," to, quote, "help preserve the residential character of its neighborhoods," and, quote, "the ability to use zoning regulations to protect community residential character."
Wrap it up.
Okay, I have one, one and a half sentences. This has been well-established for decades, citing cases from 1980, 2002, 2004, and 2021. Therefore, choose self-determination, vote no. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Brian Latina, Precinct 9. Is this Attorney General the same one that told us we had to do this MBTA Community Act in our town and change our zoning at the state?
It was the Attorney General's Office that reviewed our bylaws, I don't know who in that office did.
So not a particular person?
I do not know.
Is, is the definition of family in Brookline, maybe you could answer, do we do anything else related to Brookline, like the town's school budget? We use, we use a measure of different towns. I don't recall ever hearing Brookline as our, our case in point for whatever we do.
I don't believe we do, but I don't think that's relevant for this case.
It's not relevant. Have you been to Brookline?
Yeah. Families, families definition is consistent, regardless of what town you live in.
Okay, that was, that was your four questions, so, please help yourself.
Well, you can start the clock at any time. So you, you, you picked this Brookline family definition for Chelmsford because the Attorney General, who probably doesn't have a traditional family like most of us in this room do, we know what a family is.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, hold on, hold on. Brian, 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 that was completely out of order. Stay to the facts of this article.
I am, Mr. Moderator.
No, you're not. No, you're not.
A family is well-known in our community, has been for 250 years, Mr. Moderator.
No, no, Brian, we're not going to have that discussion in here, okay? There are plenty of families that are non-traditional, so just get on with the article that you want to, the point you want to make regarding this.
The zoning article, Mr. Moderator, zoning article says what a family is in Chelmsford. That's the point.
So, so address that, but don't talk, don't talk about specific individuals or situations.
I'm not talking about specific individuals.
You said the Attorney General doesn't have any kids, stop it.
I didn't say they had no kids.
Go ahead.
We have non-traditional families, we have group homes, I have a group home on my street, well, I did until they closed it down. Now, these families are defined here for the purposes of protecting our property, our zoning, Mr. Moderator.
So that's the argument you make. That's a better argument than talking about individuals.
Mr. Moderator, it says here that the Attorney General suggested this definition in Brookline for us.
So, that's already been brought up by three other people, so, you know.
Mr. Moderator?
You know, please make different arguments. Go ahead.
If you'd like to debate, you can come here and debate me, Mr. Moderator. Please leave my debate time alone.
No, no, when you come out of, out of order, I have to call you on it, and then when you argue with me on it, you're using up your time, and everybody else is here.
Okay, please let me finish.
Please do, you've got a minute.
The definition of family has been well-known in our town. Brookline is not our town. I've been there, they didn't even have a flag in the city-town hall, okay? I have been to Fitchburg as well. Fitchburg was protected by having that definition that we outlaw, we draw lines through here, because our Attorney General said to. We don't, we have no sovereign, Mr. Moderator. We have no sovereign. If Mr. Trump suggests something, we have to go to court to have it happen. We don't take what the federal government, the state government, or any other community government, we do zoning at the town level, that protects our town.
And that's what you're voting on?
That's what we're voting on.
Exactly.
We are not changing the definition of family, this is.
That's your vote, maybe people will agree with you, and maybe they won't. That's up to them.
George Zaher, Precinct 2. This, I believe, is a question for town council. Under 195103, B3 and B6, why not stay silent on excluding public school systems? For instance, just say potential fiscal impact, including impact to town services, period. Why, why can't you stay silent on it, and then the planning board can go through their special permit process and deal with what they need to deal with? Why specifically say excluding schools?
Through the moderator, the, I believe, the reason that the excise was chosen here was to eliminate a direct conflict with case law. That case law says that you specifically cannot use impact on the school systems to determine whether use is allowed in a particular location in the town. So that language was excised. To your point, could you exclude, could you excise other language here? Yes, you could, but that wasn't the choice that the planning board made.
So did the planning board consider leaving that out and leave it more vague, so that the planning board can have a little more teeth during the special permit process?
Yes, that was considered. However, let me get back to that slide. If you notice that it wasn't, we did not specifically exclude it in the prior language, and many people in town, including myself, actually, and a number of other people, thought we could use it as a, as a criteria for special permits. However, in looking into it a little bit further, we realized that you couldn't. So my, my reasoning for specifically excluding it was to provide guidance to developers, to residents, to future planning board members, that it is by case law not allowed to be used as a criteria. I felt that it made it much clearer, less open to interpretation, and it also provided the opportunity for us to, when we do make decisions, specifically in terms of impact to services, if we make a general statement about impact to services, we are protected from that, that potential liability of including the school services in that general statement.
I don't know, I served several years on the planning board, and I think leaving it, putting excluding public schools, I think is really handcuffing the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Diane, excuse me, Diane Baxter, Precinct 9. I want to express support for this amendment, and particularly the definition of family. It was stated by commenters that the existing definition is perfectly fine, and we shouldn't change it. The way I read it is that it excludes at least one type of family I can think of, which would be two consenting adults living together who, who haven't married. I, I don't think it's right to have so many limitations, so I think this proposed definition is perfectly fine, as written.
Thank you very much.
Walker Horton, Precinct 6. Regarding the definition of family, does the district, or the attorney's office offer a example of where the, our current definition might run into issues with the Equal Housing Act? I think if we could understand where the potential points of friction might be, that might help understand why we're making this change.
You're asking town council?
Probably, but maybe the presenter knows something.
Well, we have to know who you're asking, so.
Town council first, then.
So the Attorney General did offer, in its letter to the town, a lengthy explanation of why they think that this definition could run into trouble by conflicting with the Fair Housing Act. Just to sum that up, other than kind of to read that definition, essentially, they say that by limiting family to blood, as, as this definition does, you're potentially excluding protected classes. These would be protected classes under the Constitution. The Fair Housing Act protects the right of every citizen to decent housing, said bluntly. So this, it would be, as used as a criterion for allowing housing in the town, could violate, could violate that act.
And then, second question. Is this change of definition specifically within the scope of zoning, or would it apply across the board through town bylaws?
Are we there? Yeah. This is just a zoning bylaw change, this does not apply anywhere else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alvin Drayman, Precinct 7. In reference to 19561, currently reads, starting with the last comma, "need for additional public recreation facilities and need for additional school facilities." My question is, can "and need for additional school facilities" be replaced with, the, I had it in my mind a second ago, basically, the financial cost to the town? Obviously, a lot more students means a lot more cost, but if you don't, but if it just says town budget, and, and maintaining the town budget, would that be a problem?
From a legal, from a legal perspective, we would have to get town council's opinion on that, but from a planning board perspective, I would have a problem with that, because the town budget, in addition to those services that we actually list out, does include the schools. And so, it could be seen as an end-around, around the case law.
It was meant as an end-around, yes, okay.
And if it is intended to be an end-around, it likely would be able to get challenged in court, and we would be losing that.
Okay. Okay, could you please start the clock? In, in response to a prior speaker's remark about two consenting adults, it says right there, but not including more than four persons living together unrelated by blood or marriage. So that certainly currently allows two consenting adult, three consenting adults, and even four consenting adults. So I don't think that's an issue. And I don't like the idea of writing a blank check to, to development where it could just flood our schools, and we have no ability to say anything against it because we excluded it. I think, I think we need to hold a solid position and see what happens. We could lose, but I don't see why we need to surrender before there's even a battle. So I, I recommend voting against this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Thorin, Precinct 5, a question just for town council. Is an amendment appropriate that would separate?
Mr. Thorin, didn't you already answer your four questions?
Totally, totally different, based on what a previous speaker had brought up.
Well, okay, I'll, I'll allow this, but.
Pretty, pretty simple. To the town coun, through you to the town council, is it appropriate or possible to have an amendment to vote on each of these sections separately?
That's really a question for the moderator, as to whether you could divide the question here, and I think it's possible, yes.
That's number one question.
I would allow, I would allow town meeting to vote on whether they want to vote on it separately, okay?
Okay.
There you go. That's my, that's my decision.
Thank you.
Virginia Crocker-Timmons, Precinct 3. Would you please put up the slide, it's back a couple, that says summary of the potential You just went by it. You just went by it. So in item number three, through you, Mr. Moderator, to Town Council, in item number three, it says the current definition of family may conflict with the Fair Housing Act, and in response to a previous speaker, the language "could" was used a lot. So does it or does it not conflict? And my, the second part to my question is?
Well, let me answer one.
So I think the best answer here, there is never any definite answers when you ask about whether a particular language will conflict with a particular application, but there is quite a bit of federal case law about restrictions on family, prohibiting essentially towns from defining what family is, and by doing that, restricting any kind of living arrangement. So I think it's fair to say that a definition that does do, does restrict in that manner is likely to be vulnerable to a legal challenge.
Okay, and so you've probably answered my second question, is how would you quantify the risk in doing nothing?
I'd say the risk is, is high, that if a challenge is brought, that the town would not be able to successfully defend that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Doreen Deschla, Precinct 9. A couple things. One's on the not being able to include our schools in the cost that would be going on. I don't think that's a good idea. I think we're leaving, I mean, I've been against the MBTA from the beginning anyway, but I think it's leaving us open for, it's going to cost us a lot, and we know it's going to cost a lot in the schools, and to not be able to put that as a, you know, as a reason for not wanting something is, is, it's just not good. I mean, we're leaving ourselves open for them to make whatever they want to make. Builders will come here and they'll put in whatever they want to put in, and we'll have no say. We can't say, oh, well, it's going to cost us too much money for schools. We can't do that because now we can't put the schools in there. Schools is a big part of our budget and we need to be mindset of it. We're planning on building a new school, a park and middle school, and we're already making it obsolete because we're building so much housing here in Chelmsford that, okay, yeah, we're building a new park and middle school, but guess what? It's going to be too small because we keep building and building and building. So we're making it obsolete before it's even built. So we need to be able to talk about the cost of our schools. That's one of our big issues, is the cost of our schools.
I, I, I think you're coming, going off target here.
No, I'm not. It says we can't say anything, any need for additional school facilities. We need to be able to.
Right, right, that, that has, we're not talking about the cost of schools. We're talking about whether or not.
The need for additional school facilities, which is what I said. We are building a new middle school, the park and middle school, which is going to be obsolete because we're going to need even bigger schools.
No, 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 we're not talking about.
You are interrupting me again, and you're taking up my time. You're taking up my time. I still have other things to say.
No, no, you're, you're out of order. Now just listen, please. We're talking about whether or not you include the, exclude public schools from the special permits, and there's been an explanation that we can't, we have to have that language in, okay? So let's not talk about the cost of schools or what's going on.
Need for additional schools.
No, no, stay.
It's written right there, need for additional school facilities. Yes, we will need additional school facilities.
We may or we may not, but the bottom line is that, that we're talking about special permits.
Right.
So stay, stay focused on that.
But it's our special permits. Why can't we have in our special permits what we want in our special permits? It's our special permits, it's our town's. Why can't we put the wording "we want"?
Because the cost, the cost of, of schools is not relevant.
Quit, stop on that, all right?
Mr. Moderator, she just asked a question, could I respond to that?
Sure, go ahead.
So the state law and the case law has established that no matter how much we want to consider the cost of additional schooling and additional students in our special permits, the case law has established that we are not allowed to use that as a criteria for special permits.
Okay, my other thing is, I mean, I had to make this really short, but we're talking about family. What we had up there for family is fine. It says four people that are, you know, not married and not related by blood can be there. I will have one thing to say, the state of Massachusetts is one of the only states in the country that do not recognize common law marriage, okay?
Okay.
So they have no, they don't care about people living together.
Your time is up.
I know, because you took it all.
No, because I left you an extra minute before I started the clock. I started the clock late. No. Go ahead. Mr. Clancy?
Jim Clancy, Precinct 2, would you like to move the question?
Okay, is there any, anyone behind you regarding moving the question? Okay, there is one procedural issue. There has been an amendment proposed, which can easily be addressed by a motion rather than an amendment. So if the proponent of the amendment wants to get up and make a motion that says the same thing, then we don't have to deal with the amendment.
After hearing the rest of the discussion about this in general, I withdraw the motion to make an amendment.
Okay. Okay, so we're voting on, on Article 31.
After the protracted debate, this is Kelly Beadie for Chiltsure Telemedia, it's, I had to be reminded which article we were at because it has gone on, and you can see that there is, I believe this is a, since it's a zoning bylaw, that it requires a two-thirds majority, which I don't think it's going to get. It's a, you know, sort of symptomatic of, of the complex times we live in because case law and state statute can often trump the desires of the townspeople, where we live and how we were preferred to see things done.
Okay. I, I, I thought that I was clear that we were voting on the article and not moving the question because there was nobody behind that. Did everyone understand that? Okay, so the article passes? Two-thirds? No, it fails. Yeah, what? Okay, okay. Did some people misunderstand the vote? Because if you did, we'll just retake the vote, but if you, if you haven't, if, if all of you thought that you were voting on moving the question, which I indicated we didn't have to do, because there was nobody else, I just want to make sure that you're all voting. Does anyone have an objection to voting on this again? I don't want there to be any questions as to, Mr. Latina, is there really any problem with everyone pushing the same button that they pushed before so there can be no question? I don't want there to be a question at a later point. Mr. Thorne? Two-thirds. It had the wrong calculation on, so, so I'm going to ask you, just so that we don't have any confusion, and I don't want anybody walking out of here upset at anybody because they thought they were voting on moving the question, just push the same button you pushed the last time, okay? If that's the way you want to vote. I think it's going to be the same. What? Yes, you are voting on the article, right?
Yes.
A vote is in favor, but not enough in favor to reach the two-third threshold, which would be approximately 80 votes for.
Okay, the article fails, right? We all were voting on the same thing. Now we're going to go to Article 32. There is an amendment on that as well, so we'll have the presentation. Yes, Mr. Latina? I don't know, do we normally keep the previous record? Yeah. Do you keep the, the record of the prior vote? Yeah, yeah, we've got the same record. So now we're going to be voting on the last article of the evening. It's Article 32, it's floodplain, there is an amendment, so we'll have the presenter do his presentation. Then we will ask the respective boards if they approve it, and then we will let the proponent of the amendment introduce her amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So for Article 32, for Article 32, the floodplain bylaw that we are proposing, in 1968, the National Flood Insurance Act was passed, and that required towns to essentially opt into this national flood insurance program. This program provides community-wide access to flood insurance, disaster relief, mortgage insurance for property owners and floodplains, and then it also helps protect communities from flood damage. So FEMA develops these detailed requirements and periodically updates the floodplain map based on new data that they get. The current requirements that we are proposing are not new to Massachusetts, they've been in place for decades, but the difference now is that Massachusetts communities have not been required to put them in place until recently. For all future bylaw and ordinance reviews, FEMA won't be accepting local code unless it meets these certain minimum standards. In 2014, the floodplain map was changed, passed a town meeting, that focused on the Concord River watershed. The current map changes are now focused on the Merrimack River watershed. Some key points that I wanted to highlight, the DCR flood hazard management program has been assisting cities and towns to implement these, these minimum standard bylaws. Massachusetts does have a model bylaw that meets the federal standard, and it was approved by FEMA and the State Attorney General's Office, so many towns are using that as the model that they're using for their towns. The most recent Massachusetts floodplain bylaw was published in 2020 with minor revisions in 2021, and model bylaws were published in 2012 and '96. So as part of the state requirements and federal requirements, local bylaws are allowed to be more restrictive than the Massachusetts model and FEMA's requirements, but they can't be less restrictive. There are some areas where we are more restrictive, this is one example, where new buildings are not allowed to be erected in floodplain zones. So that is, that is one of the examples where we are more restrictive, and we did keep those restrictions in place in this proposal. Before I get to the map, I just wanted to mention a question that came up in the pre-town meeting. What happens if we don't approve this? Well, for, as I mentioned in the previous slide, all future bylaw ordinance reviews from FEMA will no longer be accepted unless we meet the minimum standards. Also, from a town betterment perspective, the underlying purpose of the floodplain management regulations is to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the community and minimize harmful impacts of flooding. This will be ever more critical as community liabilities increase due to climate change and increased flooding and damages. From a regulatory perspective, communities that fail to enact the necessary floodplain management regulations will be suspended from participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, which provides all of these benefits. And if suspended from the National Flood Insurance Program, it, the Section 202A of the Flood Disaster Protection Act of 1973 then prohibits federal assistance for the acquisition or construction of structures in special flood hazard areas unless they're, they're participating in the program. It also applies to, the prohibition applies to federal grants, loans, disaster assistance, and mortgage insurance. So if we don't enact these, we are essentially pulling ourselves out of the National Flood Insurance Program. So the map and legend here is very hard to see on the slides, but I wanted to show you what it looks like. I do have links in the back of the slide presentation where you can go to the FEMA site and take a look at the floodplain maps. You can also take a look at, it's a very interactive map where you can see where the zones have changed over time. These slides don't do it justice, but you can take a look at it when you have a chance. There are additional links and information here on the DCR review of our floodplain law, bylaw, the checklist that we went through as part of the process, as well as the presentation to the planning board that we were given by DCR as part of the process. So all of the changes that we're proposing today are pretty standard FEMA recommendations, that is the minimum that they're requiring, and as I mentioned, any of the areas where we are more strict in our bylaws, we did keep those in. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 32.
Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 32.
Planning Board have a recommendation?
The Planning Board unanimously recommends this article.
Okay, now we have an amendment which we're going to have to address as well. Will the proponent of the amendment get up and explain the amendment?
Chris Bowman, Precinct 10. The amendment is to Section 195-77.5, Designation of Community Floodplain Administrator, in which the Community Development Director is designated as the official floodplain director. At the end of this sentence, the amendment calls for putting in, adding the following. However, before any special permit, sorry, before any special permit application smittle affecting the floodplain district directly or indirectly goes to the planning board, preapproval shall be attained from the town engineer, who's a professional engineer, Conservation Commission, and the Board of Health without exception, and which shall not be waived, and any other impacts to the floodplains. Now, this amendment is increasing the due diligence of the town. It is not less than, therefore, it is not adverse to it. Now, the reason for this amendment is that the purpose and intent of the floodplain district and bylaw amendment details involve the public health and safety, the natural flow of the water course, protecting, preserving, and maintaining the water table, the water recharge areas, and present and potential water supplies. The purpose and intent is expanded with this proposed warrant, Article 32, and bylaw amendment details to include reducing threats to life and personal injury, eliminating new hazards, preventing compromised water quality of contamination and pollution from flooding, avoiding the loss of utility service locally and in the surrounding region, reducing damage to public and private property, and preventing and reducing the ensuing cleanup and restoration cost from flooding. This is, this expanded content implies the expected increase, increases in intense flooding duration and frequency due to the changing climate. But the impact is going to be far greater than what is indicated because not just one town or city is affected, but the whole regional area and/or the state. Intense flooding also severely impacts the infrastructure, sewage treatment, soil erosion, aquifers, and could give rise to airborne and waterborne diseases. The increased flooding that we have had The increased flooding that we have had over the last decade or so is minimal compared to the expected intense flooding. For example, the Midwest and the South have experienced intense flooding recently multiple times, resulting-
It was on the screen, and it's off the screen. Can you put it back on the screen so everybody can see it? It's highlighted in red. Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
That's okay. Thank you. For example, the Midwest and the South have experienced intense flooding recently multiple times, resulting in hundreds of millions and billion-level dollars in damage, including injuries and lives lost. Prevention is the key, designing to redirect flooding to minimize impacts, potential damage, and public health and safety. This requires subject matter knowledge and experience. The town engineer is knowledgeable in hydrology, flooding, infrastructure, erosion, contamination, pollution, aquifers, drinking water, and much more. The Conservation Commission is knowledgeable in the hydrology of wetlands and flooding. The Board of Health is knowledgeable in the public health and safety, personal injury, and threats to life. Therefore, choose subject matter expertise. Approve the amendment to warrant Article 32. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Well, did everyone have a chance to read? Can you read what?
Yes.
I'm sorry? Can you make it larger? Can you make it larger?
I have no control.
Oh, can you make it larger?
I will read it to everybody who could not read it. Although, we're going to try to make it a little darker and bigger. I don't know how we can do that.
Well, big enough.
Loose not going to work.
Well, there's something with high contrast. That looks a little-
Doesn't clash.
Yeah.
And bold. Maybe you can fold it and make the font bigger.
And make the font bigger.
Make the font bigger.
Okay, we've made this font bigger, but I'm going to read it. It's not that long. However, before any special permit application submitted affecting the floodplain district directly or indirectly goes to the planning board, preapproval shall be obtained from the town engineer, parentheses, professional engineer, end of parentheses, Conservation Commission, and the Board of Health without exception, and which shall not be waived and/or other impacts, or any other impacts to the floodplain. That's the change, okay? Now, I don't think that any of the boards has had an opportunity to review that, so anyone can ask the proponent of the amendment questions because we're going to be voting on the amendment first. Go ahead.
Can I say one thing? In discussing this with Town Council, Town Council indicated that the warrant article as presented is consistent with FEMA's requirements for floodplain insurance program. So he's concerned that any change might indicate that FEMA may have a problem with it. I expressed that since this is an increase in due diligence on the part of the town, it's not taking away anything from what FEMA requires, that it should be acceptable.
Okay.
Then again, we don't know.
Okay. Let other people have questions for you, so if you can-
You want me to go sit down?
Well, no, you can move off to the side in case anybody wants to ask you any questions because if you want to make an answer, you're going to be right by the microphone. Go ahead.
Thank you. Jim Clancy, Precinct 2. Mr. Moderator, through you to the presenter. I'm just trying to understand what the last two clauses mean. I understand that we have a change to special permit application, that we're adding in additional oversight that's required, and that it's to be done without exception. Then we get to, and which shall not be waived, and any other impacts to the floodplain. And I'm just not understanding the correlation to the sentence.
Mr. LaValle, did you hear the question?
Was that to her or me?
That was to you.
She's the presenter.
Oh, that was to the-
Yep, that's okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And answering the previous speaker. Let me go back to what I wrote. Okay, this has to do with the planning board and the various projects that have come up to it over the past 11 years. Typically, is a lot of exceptions requested and waves made, specifically in the wetlands area, which does affect the floodplain. The consequences of not being able to have the subject matter expertise to determine what and how, and how badly, the floodplain is affected, okay? The floodplains are subset within the watershed. If those two things are not maintained properly, we're in a lot of trouble in many, many ways, specifically as how the warrant article specifies it with public health and safety, erosion, contamination, pollution, and so on. So it's important to know for projects that are proposed within the floodplain district, whether or not all the specific technical criteria is met in the first place. If it is, then it passes the gate to the planning board. If it doesn't, then it gets kicked out. Either the person walks away, or they go, oh, I see what's wrong, and then corrects it, and then comes back. This also prevents the planning board going through the time and effort to review projects that may not even meet the floodplain requirements in the first place. So, and additionally, it helps protect us, the residents, our property, the businesses here, our land, and our town's character.
Thank you.
No. That's okay. Now, I understand what you're trying to do here. I'm not understanding the way it's written, and that's my concern. I think what you're trying to say is, however, before any special permit application submitted affecting the floodplain district directly or indirectly goes to the planning board, preapproval should be obtained from the town engineer, professional engineer, Conservation Commission, and the Board of Health concerning any other impacts to the floodplain without exception, and this requirement shall not be waived.
Yes.
Is that what you're trying to say?
Yes.
Because the way it's written, it doesn't say that.
To me, it does, but that's exactly-
Okay.
The, what it implies.
That's your intent.
That's the import, yes.
Okay. It doesn't say that.
George Donrulles, Precinct 2. This is to the Community Development Director, who would be the administrator.
Speak into the microphone, George.
Apologize. This is to the Community Development Director, who would be the administrator. Evan, can you walk us through, if a project comes before you, who you consult with and your process, please?
Sure. Good evening. Evan Belansky, Director of Community Development. So I've been the Community Development Director for 18 years simultaneously. I've also been the floodplain administrator on behalf of the town for 18 years. Projects do not come directly to the floodplain administrator. Under Section 195-82, which is the special permit provision within the floodplain bylaw, special permits go directly to the Board of Appeals. And as part of that process, 82A, the applicant, the application must be referred to the planning board, to the town engineer, to the Board of Health, and to the Conservation Commission for review and recommendation to the zoning Board of Appeals. So the administrator does not do any permitting administratively or regulatorily. All special permits go through the zoning Board of Appeals process.
But you help facilitate the information to get to that board.
The office facilitates the paperwork, the administrative paperwork. As it pertains to the floodplain administrator, that position is designated as a point person for FEMA and for the State Division to have as a point person for communication to the town. If in the event there's an audit, which there has not been an audit over the last 18 years, the floodplain administrator is responsible for providing all of the regulatory paperwork to prove compliance with the floodplain bylaw.
Has there ever been any issues?
No, we've never had an audit. In fact, we've had very few special permits to the zoning board over the last 18 years. Some of you who are familiar with Tingsborough Road, that's a floodplain, and we've had several residential and commercial floodplain applications to the Board of Appeals.
You can start the clock. You can start the clock. I think, I've seen this before where this is more of a housekeeping article where the floodplains changed, and we've had to bring it before town meeting before. I think to add this is not useful. I think that we should leave it alone and then vote for it so we can get going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Araway, Precinct 8.
Can you lower the microphone a little bit, maybe?
Yes, sir. Nancy Araway, Precinct 8. Question for the Community Development Director. Evan? If a application comes in for a floodplain district project that is a single family, would it go to the ZBA or the planning board as the Board of Appeals?
The current bylaw requires all special permits to go to the Board of Appeals. The planning board currently is not involved.
So it would go to the ZBA?
Correct.
Not the planning board? Okay. And question for the proponent of this modification?
The amendment, yes.
Yes?
The amendment.
And the question is, why would you put this requirement for preapproval by the boards that already, by the functions that already approve applications that are already listed in 195-82 in this section under the responsibilities of floodplain administrator, which isn't his job?
Mr. Moderator to the previous speaker. The purpose for this is because the floodplain district is about the floodplain, is about intense flooding. It is not restricted to typical projects that developers do, and then you just say, well, you know, are they doing this, are they doing that? This entails much, much more.
Well, why don't you answer the question that was specifically asked because it was a very specific question, and I want you just to focus in on the question that was asked.
Okay. Because the subject matter expertise concerning any project within the floodplain district needs to be done first and foremost, not simultaneously with any project that is to be evaluated. This way, we know upfront whether or not the requirements are met or not, instead of involving the ZBA, in this case, and wasting their time and energy on something that may not even be applicable because it doesn't meet the standard. So the intent-
Okay, okay. Are you satisfied with the response you received?
I'd have to say it doesn't answer the question, but I'm satisfied that that's what I'm going to get.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, you can start the clock, sir. So I have, I don't know, 11, 12 years on the planning board, and a lot of decades as a quality manager. And besides this being out of place and nebulous and redundant, it's also non-standard process. And one of the things that I've learned in my lifetime as a quality manager is that when you have a small percentage of your activities that use a non-standard process, they just get screwed up. And I strongly recommend against it.
Thank you.
Anita Taney, Precinct 10. I'm going to start the clock. I'm going to vote against this for a couple of reasons. One, it doesn't make sense as written. I think Mr. Clancy brought it up.
Please speak in the microphone. When you looked left or right.
Sorry. It doesn't make sense as Mr. Clancy had previously brought up. Two, it's already covered in 195.82. That's about it. And those are my two simple reasons, and I ask you to vote no on this article. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amendment.
Chris LaValle, Planning Board Chair. I actually, you can start the clock. I actually recommend against this amendment primarily because of all of the reasons stated already, but if this amendment were to pass, it would actually create a conflict in the article in that we would have one section telling the zoning Board of Appeals to do the special permit, and in this art, this section, it would be the planning board. So it would actually create a conflict in the article, which we would have to rectify somehow. So I would recommend against this amendment.
Thank you. Okay.
If I could just address all the previous, very quickly?
You've had plenty of time to make your point, okay?
So-
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Unless you want to refute a specific statement that somebody else made, you've really made your point. I think people all understand what your position is.
No, I understand that. I just want to state, since I've been informed that it is, would incorrectly go to the planning board, then this should say the zoning Board of Appeals.
Well, that's not what the amendment says.
No, I understand that.
Okay, we have an amendment before you.
Can I put in an amendment now to change planning board to ZBA?
Well, let's see how this one works, okay? All in favor of the amendment as submitted?
Can a friendly amendment be put in?
Now, let's vote on this amendment. If she wants to change the wording from planning board to zoning Board of Appeals, we can address that. I'm not sure there's going to be much of a difference in the way it votes, but that's, we'll see what happens. Okay. All in favor of the amendment, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Now, Ms. Bowman, do you want to change the wording? Do you think it will make a material difference in the vote?
Most likely not.
Well, well-
But instead of changing planning board, it could just be, goes- But instead of changing Planning Board, it could just be, goes to Planning Board removed, right? So, it would read, however, before any special permit application submitted affecting the floodplain district directly or indirectly, preapproval...
Well, don't read it to us. Tell us what you would want to amend on your amendment because, to be candid with you, I'm not sure that any change you make is going to be material.
I would recommend taking out, goes to the Planning Board.
So, you're taking out the word "goes to Planning Board"?
Yes.
Okay. We will vote on that. The amendment to the amendment, the language is exactly the same except "goes to the Planning Board" has been removed.
Mr. Moderator, I just need like two minutes to make my decision.
And, oh, and Ms. Bowman, you're going to have to fill out another form. Mr. LaValle?
Chris LaValle, Planning Board Chair, again. I would recommend voting against the amendment to the amendment. Again, because we have this already addressed in 195.82, it would be duplicative language, again confusing, and potentially conflicting with the process that is already in 195.82.
Thank you.
I'm here to, Judy Carvin, Precinct 8. I would like to move the article for a vote.
Well, we have a verbal amendment. I'm assuming we're going to get the change in like 30 seconds.
So, I'll wait and do it again?
That's fine, and I would appreciate it. Town Council has indicated to me that we can, pending the fact that we're assuming that this language is going to be the way that it says it's going to be, we can vote on the revised amendment that just removes the words "goes to the Planning Board." So, we're going to be voting on the second proposed amendment. We do have a motion to move the question, so we will vote on that. And then, if that passes, we will then vote on the article as originally presented. Okay, the motion to move the question has passed, 116 in favor, two opposed, one abstention. We are now going to be voting on the final article of the evening, the flood zone article. Yeah, pretty much.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Shay, make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Before you say that, and I just want to inform everyone that we will be having a special town meeting June 23rd, if you were not aware of that. So, I will see you then. I will entertain the motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you very much.
Town Moderator John Curlin stole my thunder. I was going to let... Town Moderator John Curlin stole my thunder. I was going to let everybody know that we'll next be together here, not in October, but on June 23rd for a special town meeting, but I know why. Town Manager Paul Cohen told me that it's because the Byam School needs a new roof, and there is a need to have a, apparently it's urgent enough that it needs to be done within the current fiscal year. So, we'll look forward to seeing you here on June 23rd at 7:30 PM. In the meantime, for, it's funny to make comparisons and contrasts, in the time it took us, which is almost two hours now to go through four articles, we had already gone through about 25 of the previous ones on the warrant. Not to make light of what was discussed here tonight, I think there's a sort of a moral victory, a social victory for Mary Donovan, who put forward the idea of a pet cemetery, and she was obviously very emotionally attached to her pets and to this idea, and so it will go forward. And maybe the Planning Board for its zoning articles, they're sort of batting one for one. One was shot down, the other was approved. This floodplain is important to us because of the need to conform to federal regulations so that we, if you go out and get floodplain insurance, you could be sure to be covered when that flood happened, should it happen. We wouldn't want that to happen. So, as always, being here at Ringside at the town meeting is always entertaining and always instructive. You know, I learn something new every time. I've been doing this for a long time, and tonight I came away with, one of the things that I was going to say is that John Curlin is fairly unflappable. He's very even keeled, but he can get his dandruff when he seems, it seems like he's being pushed around by town meeting reps. He has our backs, so to speak. I want to thank all of you for watching tonight. Don't forget to check out the online recording from Monday night, which also had most of the rest of the detail of this town meeting. I also want to thank the staff and volunteers here at Chelmsford Telemedia, as always, bringing you this great presentation. We'll see you at the Fourth of July parade. Good night, everyone.